Seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Welcome to all. Lynette Strecker, our clerk treasurer is ill tonight, and we have Rhonda Estes, our senior accounting clerk, who's here, and will be able to answer questions when we get to item number five on the bills. We also have here, as usual, we have Ryan Kaeth from K E R M, KG S Radio. This is being broadcast live over both radio stations, and it is also on YouTube Live and will be stored on YouTube. We are also very happy to have back Jessica Oaks from the Torrington Telegram. Happy to have the Torrington Telegram back. This is Tuesday, August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. This is the second council meeting in August, the sixteenth council meeting of the year. And our first order of business is the pledge of allegiance, and I've asked Councilman Rick Warren to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda are the mayor's informational items. While by the calendar there is about a month left of summer, for many of us, the start of the school year signals summer's end. School started yesterday for all city and county schools. As such, please yield for school buses, especially loading and unloading children, and please obey all traffic laws. Watch for the lower speed limits in the school zones. Please yield to pedestrians and keep a sharp lookout for motorcycles, electric bikes, electric skateboards and scooters, and even the old-fashioned bicycles. Most residents have done well battling the bumper crop of weeds this year. For these folks, I thank you for your service. But there are still many properties around town that are in violation of the city weed ordinance. Overgrown weeds diminish the quality of life for all of us, provide habitat for vermin, and create fire danger. Please take care of the weeds to avoid a visit by the code enforcement officers. As the warm weather does continue, please continue to enjoy the following municipal recreational venues: the municipal golf course, the municipal swimming pool, the municipal ball fields, the municipal walking paths, the municipal parks, and the new pickleball courts. As always, please slow down. Please don't use your cell phones while driving. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the August fifth, twenty-five council meeting to be published on, tomorrow, on August twentieth, twenty-five.
Mr. Mayor, I have moved to approve the consent agenda, including the minutes.
All right. I have a motion from Councilman Deal to approve the consent agenda, which includes the council meeting minutes from last council meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Kelly. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the consent agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda itself.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
I have a motion from Councilman Victorin to approve the agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Warren. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approval of the agenda as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the agenda is approved. Next item on our agenda is what's called the public forum. I don't see any takers for that this evening, but I like to explain it so that people in the future are aware of the possibility of talking to council in this section of the agenda. This is for non-agenda items. There is a time limit of two minutes, and the speaker must sign up before the meeting. It is a time for the council to listen. No action will be taken. And there are sign-up slips in the room if anybody wants to take advantage of that in the future. We are now on to the action items. Item number one is ratify special event permit addendum, approved August seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Matthew Richardson with the compound submitted an additional request for closure of East M Street for the Hometown Hustle 5K that was held on August ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, from seven thirty AM to one PM. And I would just mention to council that Mr. Richardson had agreed to reimburse the city for the estimated hundred and five dollars for costs for that addendum, which was barricades, I think, to close off part of East M that morning. I would call on Chief Johnson if he's got anything to add to that.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I don't really have a lot to add. The additional request didn't include the closure of East M. Sounds like there was some miscommunication on that. We were asked to try to make that accommodation so that they could host a fun event. By all reports I received, it was a safe and fun time, and Mr. Richardson was easy to work with on it. So let me know if you have any questions. I'd be happy to answer them.
All right. Gentlemen, do you have any questions for Chief Johnson? I don't see any, Chief. Thank you. Item number one, I would entertain a motion to ratify and approve the special event permit addendum as set forth in item one.
So I move, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion from Councilman Deal in item, excuse me, in item number one to approve and ratify the special event permit addendum. Do I have a second?
Second.
Pardon me. Second from Councilman Kelly. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Item number one, all those in favor of approving and ratifying the special event permit addendum signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that event permit addendum is approved and ratified. Item number two on the agenda, ordinance on third reading, and Mr. Eddington is here. So I would ask Mr. Eddington if he would please read that ordinance by title.
It's an ordinance amendment enacting section one, two point four, zero point zero, six, zero of the Torrington Municipal Code, two thousand and twenty-five revisions relating to municipal parks, hours of use, with no changes.
Thank you, Mr. Eddington. This is third reading, gentlemen. I would call on Mr. Estes if he thinks he needs to add anything that he hasn't talked about on first and second reading.
No comment, Mayor.
No comment. That's fine. Thank you, Mr. Estes. All this does was set the hours for the new pickleball courts over just north of the swimming pool, and those hours are six AM in the morning till ten PM in the evening every day of the week. It's a simple amendment to the ordinance. Anybody have questions for Mr. Victorin?
One question, Mr. Mayor. Just curious if there will be signage that will be posted for users of the pickleball court to know that there is an open and closed time?
Not thinking there'd be any problems. I've ordered those signs already. They should be here by any day.
That's good, because people need to be on notice of the hours.
Yeah, so I thought so. They're on order. That's what I know, so.
Okay. All right. Gentlemen, any further questions for Mr. Eddington or Mr. Estes on item number two? I don't see any. So I would entertain a motion on item number two to approve the ordinance on third reading as presented. Do I have a motion?
Still moving, Your Honor.
Got a motion from Councilman Kelly. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Victorin. Any further discussion on item two? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Item two, all those in favor of approval on third reading. The ordinance set forth in item two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that ordinance is approved on third reading. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item number three, request to approve and award a bid for the F Y twenty-six airport terminal building, FAA AIP project three dash five six dash zero, zero, two, nine, dash zero, two, four, dash, twenty, twenty-five. Staff recommends awarding the bid to Dietzler Construction Corporation, and that's actually Berthad, Colorado, is their headquarters for that bidder, in the amount of one million, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifteen cents, contingent upon final approval by the Federal Aviation Administration and the Wyoming Department of Transportation Aeronautics Division. And with that introduction, I would call on Director of Public Works Harkins.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This project includes the construction of a new eighteen-hundred-and-fifty-five-square-foot terminal building at the airport. It also includes the relocation of the radio and weather equipment, the VITRUT system, and the Automated Surface Observing System, or ASOS, to that new building. The bid opening was held on June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five for the project. We had three contractors that submitted bids in conformance with the bidding requirements, and those are shown below, and also on the bid tab attached. Dietzler Construction was the low bid at one, one million, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars, fifteen cents, which was about forty-eight point seven percent over the engineer's estimate of eight hundred and six thousand, fifty dollars. Contractor's been given a hundred and ten working days from the date of the notice to proceed to be substantial, substantially complete with the project. The engineering for this project was previously approved by council on January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five to MC Shaft in the not-to-exceed amount of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-one cents. So the total cost of the construction of this project comes out to one million, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, twenty-seven dollars and fifteen cents, as you can see on the second page of your handout in the agenda. So funding for this project has been challenging, to say the least. We are taking five years of bill apportionment money that was split ninety-five percent FAA, two point five percent YDOT, and two point five percent city for a total amount of seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We have a YDOT state-only grant, which is a YDOT percentage of eighty percent, city percent of twenty percent, for a total of two hundred and fifty thousand. We have a YDOT state apportionment, FAA ninety-five percent, YDOT two and a half, city two and a half. It came out to thirty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifteen cents. And then we're going to borrow for two years the future airport entitlements at that ninety-five percent FAA, two point five percent YDOT, two point five percent city for a total of three hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. So the total funding available comes out to that one million, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, twenty-seven dollars and fifteen cents, with FAA paying seventy-seven point five percent, YDOT paying sixteen point eight percent, and the city paying five point seven percent. Funds were set up in the fiscal year twenty-six budget for this project. However, the amount that was established in the budget was one million, two hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, which is a hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven point, fifteen point fifteen cents short of the actual award amount that we are asking for. So I talked to Lynette, and it will probably either do a budget adjustment, or we might be able to take care of it in the fiscal year twenty-seven budget, as this project will likely not start until the spring and probably continue into the summer past the beginning of next fiscal year. With all that being said, are there any questions?
One simple one. This is complicated, but you've explained it well, and I appreciate your oral explanation and your explanation that was in the handout. Whatever council does tonight, if the council approves the awarding of this bid, it's contingent, so it would be approved contingent upon final approval by the F F, FAA, and the YDOT Aeronautics Division, correct?
That's correct.
Just wanted to point that out.
I had to look up, see what Dietzler Construction was all about. It looks like they've done quite a few projects, but nothing, I didn't see anything in their resume that did anything like this. I mean, they've done bridges and they did a kind of a sewage pond or something out of Yoder or whatever, but in different things.
I think they've done a couple of buildings out at Yoder for their own personal setup out there.
And this company is based, the home base is Colorado somewhere?
I think this part is based out of Colorado. I think their home office is somewhere in Chicago.
I think that this office that is involved in this bid is Berthad, Colorado.
Right.
Not out at Yoder with their frac sand operation.
Right.
Part of the same company.
Yes. They're actually a pretty large company.
Did, did they appear at the bid opening?
Yes, they did.
Who from the company appeared?
Uh, Bob Dietzler. He was also at the pre-bid construction meeting.
Is that the son?
I believe so.
Any concerns that we just have a set amount? There's no contingency fund for this?
I don't think so. I'm hoping not. I mean, the funds obviously are pretty tight on this project. We've had to do some pretty unique funding, talking to YDOT, FAA. I think if there was any overage of that, YDOT or FAA would probably be able to cover some of that. They seem to be really, have really been helpful in trying to get the city this project, and I don't think that they would stop if we were somewhat over.
Thank you.
And I know, Mr. Harkins, there was some concern and talk about possibly reopening the bid, but that idea was pretty much quashed by FFA and YDOT. It would.
Yeah, we had a meeting, it was probably a week and a half ago, with F, myself, MC Shaft, YDOT, and FAA, and we discussed the possibility of going out to bid on, and doing like a construction manager at risk project. They did agree that that would be an option. They did state, however, that FAA would require a new design contract. So we would be responsible for the actual design that's already been done, which currently, I think I have a pay application for about sixty, sixty-five thousand dollars from MC Shaft for the work that's already been done on the project. We would be responsible for that, and if you look at the grand total down there, our five point seven percent only comes to about seventy-seven thousand. So we're kind of, we'd be money ahead to just go ahead with the project as is instead of trying to start all over again, and there's no guarantee that even doing what we were thinking about doing by going out to bid again, that we would get more favorable bids, because this is an FAA contract, and it is subject to the Buy America, Build America requirements, the Davis Bacon wages and all that also. So being a federal contract, it's more expensive than just a normal, like, Cochen County construction contract with the city.
And, and if you look on page one of your handout, Mr. Harkins, I mean, there wasn't a whole lot of difference between the low bid, the middle bid, and the high bid, really.
No, they were competitive bids, obviously. And after discussion with FAA and YDOT at that meeting, you know, this, this project is a little less than seven hundred dollars a square foot, but some of the other projects they've had, like I think one was in Scotts Bluff, was closer to not, eight to nine hundred dollars a square foot, so. Why, the construction costs are obviously absurd at this point in time in our history. There, I guess it's bad for everyone. It's not just picking on Torrington.
So I, I see that we're going to borrow from future entitlements, and that got me thinking about, I don't know if there was a time when, when I first got on the council, but there was certainly a time before that. There was moments where different airports borrowed from our entitlements. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Are those entitlements paid back now?
Oh, yes. They've been paid back for quite some time.
Okay.
And that's not an odd thing to do, borrow from future airport entitlements, right? It's.
No, typically the way this, this whole entitlement program works is FAA gives YDOT a certain sum of money that they distribute to all the airports within Wyoming. Those airports that don't particularly have a project that year, I mean, they have their entitlements, but there's, you can only accumulate so many entitlements before you're no longer eligible for any more entitlements. So what they try to do is if another airport has a project such as ours that's a little bit over, they'll borrow from somebody else, give it to this airport, and then we pay back, you know, that airport with our future entitlements. That way, YDOT doesn't lose any money back to FAA.
This project, is this, I mean, is this a, like a two-story building or a one-story building, or?
It's a single-story metal building.
Metal building?
Yes.
And I, I noticed there's quite a few subcontractors that were apparently bid in the pre-bid meeting.
Correct.
Which is good for Torrington, I guess, if they use the subcontractor. And I would imagine they'd bring their own, part of their crew in.
I believe so, yeah.
But they still have to have someplace to stay, I suppose. So it could benefit the whole town.
It could.
And, and, Mr. Harkins, you're expecting this project to start, well, it's got to start within a hundred and ten, or completed within a hundred and ten days of?
After the notice to proceed. We probably won't issue the notice to proceed until we get word from the contractor that, of when the building will be delivered, because it could take, I mean, if we issued the notice to proceed after you guys, if you so choose to award the project in a hundred and ten days, they may not even have the building by then. So.
But your, the guestimate is spring they'll start on this?
I'm, I'm thinking spring. I'm sure that once, you know, if they get awarded the project, that they'll do their due diligence to make sure that the building's ordered, and whatever timeframe that takes is whatever timeframe that takes. There's probably other items within the building that they do have to order, and some of those may be problematic with the Buy America, Build America requirements.
And I know Councilman Victorin is a member of the airport committee. The airport, or the airport board is in favor of this, as far as I know, from talking to some that I've talked to.
They're definitely in favor of the airport terminal building. I don't think they're too happy with the price that we're getting, but again, it, it is what it is.
I would say, Mr. Mayor, that it's a mixed, mixed opinions across the committee. One thing that the committee is really pushing for is more projects that will help bring revenue to the airport. There's probably the argument that, that this new building could increase traffic at the airport, but you know, as we all know, there's a deficit with the airport's budget. So I think, hopefully, in, in future projects, we can look at those, some of those types of projects that could bring some more revenue to the airport. You know, that basically the, the main revenue earners up there is hangar rent and fuel sales, and we're kind of, well, we're, we're, we have no available space for hangers. Or I shouldn't say no available space. We don't have any available hangers. We have space for them, but, and then we're limited on, on fuel storage, and we have an aging fuel farm, fuel tank farm. So it's, it's hard for us to compete because we can't store tanker loads of fuel at a time and those types of things, but overall, I, I would say that the airport board is, is mixed on, certainly I think everybody is in favor of a new building. That's, that's, it's recognizable that the airfield is in need of a new building. But they are mindful of the deficit that the airport continues to run.
I, I appreciate that input, Councilman Victorin. That building is, I don't know, ballparky nineteen fifty-two, and that current building that's up there?
Uh, it's, it's, yeah, it's old.
So will this new building use the same footprint as the one that was already there?
No, it's totally different footprint. Existing building is only twenty, maybe twenty-four by twenty-four.
But I mean, they could tear that building down and build the other one out of the top of it, right?
No, this one's going to be built just to the west of the existing building. We're going to leave the other building up during construction so that they can operate out of it. And then once this new building is completed and all the electrical equipment is transferred over into the new building, they'll set up operation over there, and then we can demolish and get rid of the old building.
But that raises a good point. The airport will remain functional during this construction phase?
Absolutely.
We lose, I think, one or two tie-down locations. Is that correct?
Um, I think one is all.
Now, does this building, does it also include the new, up, new design electronics and stuff for the operated runway lights and radios and everything like that, too?
The current electronics that we have are, are pretty much up to date. The ASOS is the, is actually, I think, gonna be updated, not necessarily as a part of this project, but sometime in the near future. But all the equipment is, is, they're making room for all the equipment in the new building, so...
So it's transfer the old one to the new?
Yeah.
Where, that, that's something new that I, I read. Where will that equip, will that equipment be on the roof?
Uh, the antennas will be, if you go up to the building right now, there's a antenna on the west side of the building, that's gonna remain. I think that's where the ASOS, it's kind of a line of sight type of communication. The actual ASOS equipment is to the, I'm gonna say southeast of the current terminal building and the existing hangars, it's kind of outside the hangar area. That will remain, obviously remains where it's at, and the communication would still be the point of contact of the tower. But the equipment would now be, instead of running to the current FBO building, would basically take a turn and go to the west and be fed into the, the new building.
So, so my understanding, you're right, the, the, whether detecting equipment will remain in place where it's at currently, it's just the...
Correct.
The communication from it to the building will be moved?
Well, it, it's line of sight as in, you know, radio-type communication, so there's really no movement of the equipment, the equipment where the actual data's being recorded, as opposed to where it's gonna ultimately end up into the building.
I see.
Will the fuel sales be interrupted during this time?
Shouldn't be, because it's all connected to the existing FBO, and all this construction is going to be to the west of that, so there shouldn't be any interruption for fuel sales.
What could cause the FAA or YDOT aeronautics to not concur? Aside from funding?
Forty-eight, seven percent?
Usually, they wanna see that the council is recommending award before they go ahead and make their recommendation. They don't wanna recommend something, and then council says, no, we don't wanna do that. They wanna make sure that council's committed before they go ahead and authorize all the, the funding and so forth.
So should council move to award, does FAA and YDOT take another, another look at all of this?
Uh, they've, they've been looking at it, obviously. Like I say, I think this is more of a formality for them. It's, they wanna make sure that council says, okay, we're gonna do this, and then they're gonna go ahead and, you know, make their recommendation to go ahead and approve and award the project for the amount that was, you know, stipulated in the bid.
Does the bidder also have to provide a performance bond?
Yes.
Is that included in the bid bond, or is that separate?
That's separate. The performance bond and payment bonds are part of the contract, and those are the responsibility of the contractor to get those.
Those come later?
Yes.
You don't think the forty-eight point seven percent higher will make any difference on the FAA or anything?
What was your question again?
Will the forty-eight point seven percent bid higher than the original estimate, it's gonna affect the...
Oh, no, they're well aware of what the, the current bid came in at, and that's what we've been dealing with, with all the meetings that we've been having, trying to find out where we can come up with the funds.
Not hearing any more questions, Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to approve the contingent, the awarding of the contingent bid.
All right, I have a motion on, we're on item number three, I have a motion from Councilman Deal to approve and award the bid set forth in item number three, and it's contingent upon final approval by FFA and YDOT. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Kelly. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Item number three, all those in favor of approving and awarding the bid set forth in item three, which is contingent on final approval by the FF, FAA and YDOT Aeronautics Division. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, at item number three, that bid is approved and awarded. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is item number four, award bid FY twenty-six sewer and manhole lining improvements. Staff recommends awarding the bid to, in, can't say that, In...
In situ?
In situ form, In situ form Technologies of Chesterfield, Missouri, in the amount of six hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents, and reserve of a hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents, which is fourteen point four-one percent, for contingency for a total, or a project total of eight hundred thousand dollars. And again, I would call on Director Public Works, Jeff Harkins.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This project will consist of lining about fourteen thousand seventy-one lineal feet of eight-inch cure-in-place pipe. It'll have three hundred and seven lateral reinstatements, and four hundred and forty-one point six-three vertical feet of manhole protective coating material, and all incidentals associated with the project bid items. Bid opening was held on July twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. We had three bids, again, that were submitted in conformance of the bidding requirements. In situ form technologies was the low bid. Contractor has been given the option of when to start and ninety calendar days to complete the project. The project must be substantially complete prior to November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-six. The good news about this project is it is completely a hundred percent funded through the Community Development Block Grant Program. We did receive a grant in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars, and this funding was established in the twenty twenty-six budget under account fifty-two ninety-one hundred. As a result of the very favorable bid, we are looking into contracting the, for the private inspector for this project. Our plan would be to advertise for these services through an RFP and then select the most qualified candidate at the lowest cost for the services, and this cost would also be reimbursable using that CDBG grant.
And this is the same firm that did this kind of work the last time?
They have been doing the lining work for the past several years up here. So they are very reputable and have done a pretty outstanding job for the city.
So where does this project take place, for various places around town, different streets, or what?
Most of it is centered up, the lining part is mostly centered up in the vistas and south of, just, just south of that area. The manhole lining is along the prison corridor that goes from like Highway twenty-six all the way out to the prison. We've had high concentrations of H2S in those pipes, or in those, well, in the pipes that also leach into the manholes, which have eroded and corroded some of those manholes, such that the rebar's been exposed in, in a number of them. So this project will cover that back up and then put a liner over the top of it so that the H2S no longer causes us any issues with the manholes.
Now, this is the, this is the procedure where it goes in and just lines the present lining, puts, of the pipe that's already there?
Well, the cementous part for the, for the, if you're talking to the manholes, there'll be a cementous part that goes around inside that manhole to add some actual thickness, because, like I said, there's some areas that have the rebar exposed, and once that's set, they'll come in and, and put a non-corrosive-type liner that isn't affected by the H2S. The other lining project is basically, they take a sock, they pull it from manhole to manhole, and then they inflate it and steam cure it, and I think we've brought in the past some examples of that. It's like a quarter-inch thick, very, very sturdy material once it's cured. And obviously, because it's a one-piece unit, there are no joints, and therefore, it flows better and basically lasts fifty-plus years. We don't know how long it lasts, 'cause it's, it's pretty new technology.
But we don't dig up the streets or anything like that?
You don't dig up the streets, there's very little traffic interruption. I mean, it's a very quick and easy process.
And, and we talked about this at staff meeting, it's a fairly new process, and whoever came up with it is brilliant, because it takes those old clay pipes and seals them up, and who knows, maybe you get fifty, sixty years out of them.
You could, very easily.
No digging up the streets?
No digging up the streets. It's, you know, much more cost-effective. A similar project would probably be several, several millions of dollars if you had to actually dig up the streets and replace the pipes.
So, Mr. Mayor, Director, could you explain this, the, the part here on your memo about the project inspection, about finding a private inspector? I don't recall this on the last time we had a lining project.
You're right, Mark has basically done the inspection for the lining part of it. However, he's not familiar with the manhole part of the, of this project. So he, I, he wants to hire somebody that's familiar with what all is involved, so that he can observe that, so that the next time, you know, he's, he's fully competent to be able to inspect that.
And I have another question on the manholes. Since they're, they're exposed to this H2S right now, and, and now we're going to, you know, like you said, put some more cement in there to build up the, the structure and then line it. You said that, that, that won't, the H2S won't affect that lining?
Right.
But is there anything behind the lining, since it's currently exposed? Will it continue to erode?
It shouldn't, because that liner should completely encapsulate all that concrete, and there shouldn't be any exposed concrete. And plus, because we've been experiencing this H2S for quite some time, Tom and his crew have, have put some chemical into the prison lift station to kind of mitigate some of that H2S, so that the concentration is not as high as what it used to be.
It's just got to the point before that, that there was damage?
Before that, yeah, the manholes were, and, this has been a project basically since I've been, or since I was hired with the city. We tried to get the prison to pay for it for the longest time, but no-go.
Didn't they have a similar problem with one coming from South Torrington over?
Not aware of that, no.
Just thinking, Tom took me down there one day, showed the one that's coming from South Torrington, and it was doing the same thing, the one manhole.
I'm not aware of it, it, it could very well exist, and I'm not gonna deny that, but I, I wasn't aware of that.
And the, the only interruption to residents is a, is a minor period of time where they can't use their, their sewage, their sewer?
Right, as the, the liner goes in, it will completely shut off, you know, their sewer tap that goes into the sewer, and then they come in with a little robot that comes in and, and cuts those, cuts that sock at those certain locations where their sewer line connects to the pipe. And it's, it's a fairly minimal delay, it's usually less than a few hours, I believe.
And they can do this in the wintertime? They don't need summer temperatures?
Correct. Basically, the socks come in a refrigerated truck. So they've gotta be cold, otherwise they start to set up, you don't want them setting up when they're flat.
Mr. Mayor, sensing there's no further discussion, I would move to award the bid for the fiscal year twenty-six sewer and manhole lining improvements to In situ Form Technologies in the staff presentation.
All right, item number four, I have a motion from Councilman Victorin to approve and award that bid that's set forth in item number four regarding the sewer and manhole lining improvements to In situ, In situ form technologies. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Warren. Any further discussion? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving and awarding the bid for the FY twenty-six sewer and manhole lining improvement set forth in item four, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that is approved and awarded, that bid in item four. Next item on the agenda is approval of the bills from August sixth, twenty-five to August nineteenth, twenty-five, and as usual, gentlemen, you had some bills attached to your original agenda, and then Mrs. Estes gave us an additional set this evening, and just to remind everybody, I appreciate Mrs. Estes coming in this evening, Mrs. Streckers... Uh, Mrs. Strecker's ill today, and, and I know Mrs. Estes has filled in the past for this, and appreciate you coming. So, gentlemen, if you have any questions, or do you have anything for us, Mrs. Estes? Are you just willing to take questions?
Yep.
So she's willing to take any questions.
Are you sure?
I'll give it a shot.
Okay, on the first page of the first bunch, it says air quality team LLC. LLC says dishwasher cleaner, what is that?
That's in our kitchen that we use for the daycare and the, it's, it's a special wash that they use.
It's what?
Just infect it for the daycare dishes.
In the, in the commercial kitchen?
Yes.
Okay. And what is the B and H Investments Incorporated, what do they?
That's our new Culligan business.
Okay.
And they think they're out of Nebraska now, so.
I think so, I think I've seen the truck in town.
Yeah, saw a twenty-one county plate on the truck.
And on page seven of that first set of bills for Northland Cable Television, are those all monthly charges, or a one-time charge, or?
It's once a month.
Once a month?
Mm-hmm. And it's divided out between the different departments.
That's Vive, correct?
Yes, it is.
I have a question on page ten of the first set for train. It looks like there were repairs to the cooling tower. Does that fix the cooling tower, or do we still need to go forward with a replacement?
Uh, we're looking, I'm dealing with an engineer right now, they're gonna work the system, see if we can just fix this one, or, or have to replace all the things. This was a repair we had to have, we had some water hammer in the building off that cooling tower issue, so we think there were some issues with that.
And that's the, for this building that we're sitting in right now, right? That it's been here since twenty-ten?
Correct.
If there are no more questions on the bills, I would make a motion to pay the bills that presented.
All right, we are on item number five, second page of the agenda. Got a motion from Councilman Kelly to approve the bills as presented in item number five. Do I have a second?
I would second.
Second from Councilman Victorin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approval as the bills, of the bills as presented in item five, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, those bills in item five are approved, thank you, Mrs. Estes.
Thank you.
All right, we are now in public comment section, item number six, and I see Luis Correa, the fire chief, back there. I've asked him to give us a report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, as far as calls go, we've been pretty slow, we're thankful for that. Although we did have two, two just today. But before that, in between council meetings, we only had about three of them. One grass fire, an electrical fire, and then a carbon monoxide detector going off, I believe. Um, so yeah, we've been grateful that we haven't been running on, on large grass fires like a lot of the country is. However, that does, that does open us up for a few community engagements that we have coming up. Um, the first of, of those being on September fourth, we will be doing a joint training with the Department of Corrections at the prison. And so we're, we're looking forward to doing that with them and helping them out and checking out availability and, and how, how we would be able to get into some of the locations at the prison. Uh, the next one would be on September sixth, with the Save Kids Day out at the fairgrounds. Again, another one that we're looking forward to, spending some time with kids, educating them on, on fire safety and handing out some goodies to them.
Is that on a Saturday? I think the sixth is probably a Saturday.
I believe it is, I believe it is.
Yep.
And then, uh, another one that we're looking forward to and excited about is, uh, our Guns and Hoses blood draw with the help of the police department. Hopefully we'll get lots of blood donated and make a difference out there in the world. That's all we got going on.
All right, thank you, Chief. Gentlemen, any questions?
When was the blood draw?
September twelfth.
September twelfth.
And I, that'll be at the fire hall.
See, that's the same, same day they had the car show downtown, right?
That's the concert. Concert that night.
Is this Friday, this is Saturday, though, isn't it, the twelfth?
Thirteenth is Saturday.
Yeah, I believe it's a Friday.
Twelfth's a Friday.
Okay, that's Friday, oh, that's the concert, okay.
Yeah, the next day, Saturday, is the car show.
Okay.
All right, gentlemen, any, any further questions for Chief Correa? Nope, thank you, Chief, always appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we are in public comment section. Anybody out there have a public comment? I don't see anybody, anybody on council have a public comment.
I just have a public thank you to make to the Goshen County Cattle Women. I'd want, I wanted to thank them for, for quite some time, for their beautification efforts in the downtown area, and hopefully folks have seen it now. Their banners recognizing Goshen County as the cattle capital of Wyoming, and their billboard that's above the class act. That billboard faces south, but northbound traffic on eighty-five can see it as they come into Torrington. That billboard was kind of unsightly for quite some time, but I think that was a very well, well-thought-out, well-received addition to downtown Torrington, and I just wanted to thank them for their, their work in promoting beef here in, in Goshen County and, and, and I just wanted to thank them for that.
Appreciate that, and that's the Goshen County Cattle Women, right, that did that? All right, any other comments on public comment, gentlemen? I don't see any. I would entertain a motion to leave regular session, which we are in, and enter into executive session regarding a personnel matter.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make the motion to move from regular session to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters?
All right, I have the motion from Councilman Deal to move from regular session into executive session to discuss a personal, personnel matter. Do I have a second?
I would second.
Second from Councilman Victorin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of moving from regular session into executive session for a personnel matter, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, we are leaving regular session and entering executive session. Thank you.